Trying to make something happen.
Yeah.
Right, this regular planning and zoning meeting on January 28th is called a order. John, is everybody here?
Yes, I understand all members are present.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the citizen communications. If anyone has something to say, general comments, you have an opportunity now. Please leave your comments to three minutes. No comments, we'll move on to the constituent agenda. There's approval of the minutes from the regular planning and zoning commission meeting on January 14th. All in favor? That takes us to the staff report, John.
Yes ma'am, just two quick items. I promised to give you some development activity detail. And I thought I'd run through some items that you might find of interest. As far as 2019 versus 2018. First of all, on the residential development side, we had a pretty busy year, all things considered. We had a total of 90 residential permits that were issued. Not all of those opposite for new homes, that involves residential related permit activity. That compares to 86 a year before, so you're up slightly about 4%. As far as new homes go, we had four new home permits that were issued last year compared to three. In a couple of years, I guess probably three or four years ago was our peak year, at least in recent history. But we again, again, continue to see new homes coming in this year. The activities picked up even more, so I think things are looking good. We had a lot of remodel activity last year. Home additions, not much, you know, really minimal pools, fences. We had 11 permits versus nine. Total improvement value as far as residential permit activity goes, we had $2.7 million worth of permit activity compared to 2.6 the year before, so about a 5% increase. On the commercial development side, these numbers are a little bit skewed because of the wastewater project. We require permits to be pulled for any type of connection to the wastewater system. So your numbers are gonna be up a little bit as far as your commercial activity is concerned. New buildings, we didn't issue any new commercial building permits as far as for new commercial buildings. Our building remodel, we actually were down just a bit compared to the prior year, about 50% in fact, from four to two. Additions, we are up, we had two none the year before. Certificate of Occupancies, pretty much flat compared to the same year, about 20 either way. Side permits were down just a bit, and the total commercial permits were up, 102 and 87 the year before, about 17% increase. But again, I think you attribute that to the permits that were issued for the connections to the wastewater system. As far as subdivision and zoning activity is concerned, it was a pretty busy year for that. You all obviously felt some of that with your meetings. So concept plans, we had four new concept plans for subdivisions that were approved last year compared to zero the year before. Minor plats were the same, nine each year. Major plats were up slightly, 17%. The total number of new lost plats went up about 73% in large part. You can attribute that to sanctuary, as far as them coming in with their platform. 356 new plats, our new plat blocks were approved versus 206 the prior year. Annexations, we had five, as you know, four of those were related to the school properties, the two right away annexations, and of course, the two school property annexations. And then we had the Rosemont annexation that took place at the end of the year. In zoning cases, we had three zoning cases compared to one the year before. So it was a somewhat of a busy year as far as development activity goes. We started off the year pretty quick as far as residential permit activity is concerned. And from a subdivision standpoint, we're working with several folks right now to get their submissions prepared. It depends who you all in some cases, some cases they won't because they're considered private class. But that's all we've got as far as the activity report. As I said, we're trying to keep you updated throughout the year to let you know where we stand on that. The only other item I had on there is from a staff report standpoint, is as you know, we have a planning and zoning commission member training that is scheduled for next month, specifically on the 10th. And try to accommodate schedules, we wanna move the start time back a bit, and we're gonna shorten it a little bit too. One of our members has a commitment, he's got the night of the 10th that we really can't get into. So we're gonna start that training at 3 o'clock in the afternoon here. It will be open and available to the public, and it'll run from 3 to 6. And if that one member has to bail out a few minutes early, that he shouldn't miss much towards the end of that. So it'll be a three hour training, and it's gonna be done through the COG, which I think you'll find it's interesting training. And we're gonna try to do that on a regular basis, probably bring the Board of Alderman at some point and do that too from now. We'll see how this goes first, so that's where we are. Does that work for you all from 3 to 6?
Eight again.
At the 10th of February, which is a Monday? Okay, then we'll proceed with that and get it scheduled, and we'll get it posted. That's all I've got.
Okay, we'll move on to the public hearings. First public hearing is to consider making a recommendation to the Board of Alderman regarding case ZA 20001, a proposal to zone the Salado ISD properties located on Salado School Road and Thomas Arnold Road in Salado, Bell County, Texas, as a public facility PF. John, do you have anything to present?
Just to kind of set the stage, this is a process that we told you we were gonna go through. Once the annexation was complete, our properties in the city are supposed to be zoned. So this property just recently was brought into the city. It's the Salado ISD properties on Salado School Road and Thomas Arnold. It includes what I call the inner circle properties, that's the elementary school, the intermediate school, those schools there. It also includes some of those outer properties that are on the north side of Salado School Road. So the appropriate zoning designation, since it's a school property, public school property, is public facilities. So that's our staff's recommendation as far as the zoning designation for this property. We've received some phone calls from some of the adjacent property owners inquiring about what was involved, making sure that we weren't gonna be setting up zoning for large things like cement plants and things like that. We assured them though, if it was school property, it would be school property for some time to come. So that's what's before you tonight, no opposition voiced at all from the House of Labor.
Alright, with that, I'll open the public hearing for this item 4A. Any comments?
Yeah.
Come up here, state your name, address, and please leave your comments to three minutes.
My name is Kent Raymond, I live on 1006 Salado School Road.
If you would, stand on that mic. Thanks very much.
My name is Kent Raymond, I live at 1006 Salado School Road. I've talked to Barney Knight, who's an attorney, who was the city attorney for Temple and Austin, and he thinks I'm a little bit stretched and we're limited on the process of annexing the Salado School Road area. He already not retired, he's referring me to another lawyer that specializes in annexations. I just, I don't know what all entails of being brought into the city other than the fact that it's gonna cost a lot of money on each homeowner over there.
You have not been annexed into the city. The only annexation that took place was the school district property, not yours. None of the properties on Salado School Road were annexed into the village. Only the school district property and the road.
Okay, why didn't we get an annex notice?
Actually, there were notices sent out, there were public notices that were posted on that.
I understand, but I don't understand what the annex process is on.
This is a zoning process, and the reason we sent you a notice for the zoning process, even though you're outside the city technically, is to give you a voice if you had a concern, or if you wanted to find out information about what was going on with that property itself. We don't legally have to send you a notice in a zoning case if you're outside the city limits, but we do that as a courtesy, just to involve you. The annexation process took place several months ago. And it was publicly noticed and went through all due process and public hearing. No problem.
Alright, thanks Mr. Raymond.
But please know you're not in the city. And if you want to, you can petition us, we don't have the ability to go bring you into the city. It only is by volunteer.
This just made it sound like I was being proud of the city.
No, no sir, you're good, you're good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just got a question. I'm John Burrow, we just bought the property off of Thomas Arnold Road, right next to Johnny's and Salado. Does this have any impact, that's some, that's commercial?
It does not impact.
Have anything to do with, you know, restricting businesses or anything?
It does not impact your property at all from the standpoint of restricting what you can do on your property. It only relates to the school district property, and it limits the use on that property of public schools, public facilities.
Just so you're clear on the school district property, it's the schools themselves, it's the soccer fields behind the schools, it's one house that's in there and the West Bar, those are all, that's all that is.
That's also the north of where I'm calling it.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, nothing south.
Nothing south, you're already in the city and your property is none. No problem. Unless you'd like to change your money.
Hi, yes, I'm Darlene Walsh, 1001 Mill Creek Drive. Just wanted to clarify, John, if you could explain, public facilities, could any of that property that we're zoning their public facilities, at some point in future, become, I don't know, a village office, a wastewater plant, a what, you know, a fire district, a fire district, a police department? I mean, could it be other public facilities?
It does, a wastewater plant would be a different issue because there would be some, there would be some other requirements that would come into play if there was ever a desire to do something with that. But it could be a city, it could be city offices at some point, the school district could put its headquarters over there at some point. The groundwater district could put an office over there at some point. The county could put an annex over there. It's public facilities from that standpoint. But when you get into talking about treatment plants and things like that, there'll be some other public processes that would probably play in that.
Well, there is that, that creek sort of that goes through where the soccer field is, I think, that...
There are no plans to put a wastewater plant anytime in the future at that location, so...
Or any village offices or...
No, not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
The school, as far as we're concerned, is school district property, and will be school district property. They own the property, so if anything happens on that property, they're gonna have to agree whatever's done on that property. And I doubt seriously if there's any interest from their part at this point to sell that for a wastewater treatment plant, or to sell that for a county annex building, or to sell that for City Hall, so...
I can tell you, as a member of the school, there are no plans to do any of that sort of thing on the school property.
Okay, that, I mean, but you could later, maybe 10, 20 years down the line decide to do something, yeah? Just wondering.
It has to be a public facility.
Public, a hospital, you know?
Yeah, it could be that too, remember, it's a public hospital.
It could also be redone.
Could it also be, I don't know, do they call it Lowington Housing Public Facility?
No.
No.
That's residential.
Yeah, if it was sponsored by a town.
No, it's residential, it's not public facility.
Alright, thank you.
I got another question, maybe it's a school board question. Is the school board gonna continue to use, I know they're building new schools. I'm not familiar with the development going on around here, but is there's a new school being constructed? They have a new high school, I believe, right across the street from us is that elementary and the middle school. Middle school's gonna go move over to a new facility? Is that right, or is that an elementary?
That's gonna become the junior high, that new facility's gonna become the junior high where all the facilities are now that you're talking about, which is the, used to be the elementary school, intermediate school, and the middle school. That's all gonna be elementary school now.
Okay.
That's the elementary school, the junior high is the new building, and then the high school. So that's one of the reasons that the new junior high is gonna be believed considerably once you move a lot of that over to the new building.
It is back and outside, third and fifth.
Any other comments? Alright, I'm gonna close with public comments. Do I have a motion? Any action on the recommendation of this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go on to the next public hearing. And consider making your recommendation to the Board of Alderman regarding case ZA 20002, a proposal to zone the Salado ISD properties located on Williams Road in Salado, Bell County, Texas, as public facilities. John?
Yes ma'am, this is a companion case. As you know, we, at the same time, we annexed the property belonging to the school district on Salado School Road and Thomas Arnold. We also annexed Williams Road and the school district property located on Williams Road. So this is simply a move to create the initial zoning for that property. Same zoning classification is proposed, and that's public facilities. Again, no opposition expressed from anybody up to this point, we refer.
Okay, with that, I'll open the public comments. I think we got that out of our system, so close the public comments. Do I have any discussion? Yes.
Go ahead, let's finish this because it doesn't quite relate, it relates to this, but it doesn't quite relate to this.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, let's approve the zoning as soon as possible.
All in favor? Okay, so both the zoning recommendations passed. Yes, John?
I've asked this question before, and I'd like to ask again, is there any possibility we can reduce the speed limit on Williams Road out towards Scott White Fleming to 25 miles an hour now?
We are gonna be conducting a speed study on Williams Road in the coming weeks to look at establishing a formal speed limit on that, and to look at reestablishing the school zone speed limits, and look at some other traffic control measures.
This is totally self-serving on my part, I want to drive my golf cart to my doctor's office, and right now I can't, so...
I would doubt, let me just tell you this, I would doubt very seriously that the speed study is gonna justify that 25 mile an hour speed limit.
Okay, just ask it, I'm gonna keep trying.
Now, if you get sidewalks out there...
Are we gonna get sidewalks?
That's a great segue into the next item on the agenda. Next, we're gonna discuss and consider issues relating to the development of the street impact fee ordinance.
Katie and I talked a little bit about this, and now that we've finished dealing with the park plan dedication piece, which goes to the board next week, we think the next apple we wanna eat is street fees. Right now, our current ordinance is not... It's not bad, but it's not good, if that makes any sense. And in the sense that it kind of lays the predicate for some improvements in the ability to require a developer to make some improvements. I think though, it's geared maybe more towards the larger developments. The two 300 lot subdivisions that come in, the subdivisions that develop, you know, one-way trip generations of 200, excuse me, 2,000 vehicles a day or more. And it's not really providing the village with the protection of, you know, what, maybe the smaller sized subdivisions and additional larger sized subdivisions, what type of impact they're gonna have on your overall transportation infrastructure. What we've got in place right now is an ordinance that says, I believe, that if your subdivision is over, I guess over 200, 200 lots, and if it generates over 2,000 one-way trips a day, that they basically have to go do a traffic analysis, a traffic impact study. And that traffic impact study looks at an area within one mile of that proposed development. And then you're supposed to look at that impact study and determine if the existing infrastructure levels and service would be impacted adversely as a result of that development. And if so, it does give the village a little bit of leg to go in and say, you need to do this. Translation, you know, you may need a turn lane in off a major roadway going into a subdivision, something along those lines. What, a lot of cities are moving in the direction of is establishing what are called impact fees. Ours is, deals with target situations, mainly larger subdivisions, and their potential impact on the area. Example being Sanctuary had to do a traffic impact analysis. You know, and they're doing that now, an updated version of that for text book for this new section that they're gonna be starting work on. But when we talk about traffic impact fees, or street impact fees, or roadway impact fees, it's a little bit of a different beast, because it tends to address all types of developments, not just those at a higher range. And what it does is it comes in, much like our wastewater impact fees, and it develops a fee structure, a maximum fee structure, based on land use assumptions, and based on capital improvements that have been identified that need to be made to your thoroughfare system. And it tries to establish a fee to recover the money from new developers that can be put into basically a pot of improvement money to go towards improving the streets to mitigate the impact of any new development in your community. They can be a little controversial, obviously. The development lobby was rather strong in Austin, and they were able to adjust the statutory boundaries for setting those fees. And to try to deter, I think, probably the creation of those fees. And I don't say that in a negative way towards them, they're certainly working in their interest. But that said, there is a process in statutory law that allows you to go and create street impact fees. You have to go through and do a study, much like we had to do with the wastewater impact fees. And you'll go out and you'll hire a consultant that will come in and go through. And the good news is, we've got land use assumptions and data that have been developed in the way of street improvements, and we've got the land use assumptions from your comp plan update, and also from your wastewater study that can go towards that, and that will reduce the cost of whatever impact each study you need to do. But you're still talking about a study to set the impact, it's probably gonna cost you the ballpark. I would bet someone in the neighborhood $20,000 to get the fee. You would set up an impact fee advisory committee that would work, you know, with, you know, with the consultants and the staffs of the fees, they would make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman, P&amp;Z would be involved, I'm sure, in that review process. But there would be basically a maximum fee that that study would determine that you would be allowed to collect per dwelling and subdivision coming in. And then the board would have the final decision on whether they wanna charge that maximum, or whether they wanna come in at a lower fee. Like in the wastewater impact fee in the beginning, they came in under that originally set fee. In this situation, they have that ability to do that from zero up to that maximum fee. Again, with the idea of generating money to go towards capital improvements relating to infrastructure improvements on your thoroughfare plan and on your city streets and things along those lines. It's a little bit, it allows for a little bit more of a comprehensive approach to dealing with the impact of development on your city streets, as opposed to what we have in place right now from our ordinance standpoint. Ordinance standpoint looks at kind of the, it looks at kind of the elephant room type subdivision, the big guys, but it doesn't really account for the, you know, 50, 60, 70 lot subdivisions. And I think that's the thing that we see more of as opposed to the two, three, four, 500 lot subdivisions, at least right now. So what we wanna do is put this on the agenda tonight and get your thought process on how do you feel about the idea of levying a fee per dwelling on a subdivision? How do you feel about the concept of going through the study process? The process in setting a street impact fee, a roadway impact fee, is probably about an eight month process, looking on the long side. And where the process comes is this, you've gotta go through, there are a series of mandatory meetings that have to be held, both with the impact advisory committee that's appointed, which I would assume if we did this, we would have P&amp;Z representation on that committee. But there's a series of required meetings with the impact fee advisory committee, and then there are a couple of required public meetings that have to take place, or public meetings with the Board of Alderman to take place. And in that situation, normally, it takes more than one or two meetings, because again, these can get a little controversial. There are not many cities in this area that have impact fees as far as roadway impact fees. And Colleen is one of those that has been arrested with the concept of impact fees. And the board, from what I understand, their council said, let's hold off on her. But now my understanding is there may be an end around being run over there, where we're gonna try to resurrect them and have discussion again as far as that goes. Round Rock has just adopted an impact fee. A lot of your metro areas deal with those, because they're feeling the presence of the road. They're understanding they need to try to recover some of those costs of the existing folks that are impacted, yes sir?
Can you talk about fees that are a long-term effect of the increased traffic flow? What about the initial effect of construction vehicles and all of that coming through subdivisions to get to areas like this going?
It's considered part of, it's considered part of that cost too. The analysis is based on trip, but I think that the impact fee itself tries to look at the overall impact of development.
Well, that's got it figured in.
As opposed to what we have in place right now, which only deals with the actual end result home and the end result user driving on the streets, in the larger subdivision. You know, it's, we have what cities, in places we have now is what cities, you know, have operated with for years. You know, and it's an escrow system to the point where you try to identify the improvements, who makes the improvements, they can put money in place and say to go from that standpoint. It's a mile out, but the reality of it is this, we all know that a subdivision, when it comes into town, has a greater impact on streets than just, than just those within a mile of the development. I mean, it's, you know, and it's gonna get worse, as we see more growth in this area, so, yes sir?
Two questions, first of all, we would not be improving, any money raised with this would not be for streets outside the building, if correct?
Right.
So we would be collecting money from the ETJ to approve streets within the building?
It's how you wanna approach it.
Okay, you're saying it could be, it could not be? The other question is, would we have to be able, and this is...
I can't make improvements in the ETJ.
No, I know that, that's why I'm asking the question, so we're gonna get to use it to repair some trail out here.
And the reality, I say, here's how you have to look at that. The reality of it is, if you go on what we have in place right now, if it's within a mile of the service area.
So within a basically mile around?
Yeah.
Okay, the second question is, do you perceive, do you, and I know this is so preliminary, probably the easiest of this question, but do you think that we would be able to raise sufficient funds to be able to impact the quality of streets in the village, which is a big issue from this kind of thing? Would it actually help us to do that? In other words, are we talking about 20,000 bucks over a year, or are we talking about 250,000 bucks over a year?
Oh, you're talking with subdivisions and roadway costs, roadways are expensive, and the factor that goes into those.
But could we collect enough from a fee? And what I'm asking is, would, could there be enough money to make it worth, you know, you talk about controversy, this is gonna be controversy.
Here's, here's where the rub comes, the rub comes with this, and that is, you know, you're getting money, you're putting money aside to go towards road improvements, and you may be improving the roads that are substandard already. And so the issue is, you know, the developer paying for the impact he has on the road is one thing. The developer paying for what currently is a substandard road is another, and you can't do that. It's kind of like we talked about with the park dealing, and that is, you know, they pay for the impact they have. You can't collect money to pay for the pre-existing shortfall.
But we could use the chip seal that aren't over again, can we? I mean, what are we gonna be able to use the money for?
You could do chip seal, you could, you might be able to overlay, it's just...
It will help us, but the question is, would we raise enough money to provide us with enough help to offset the controversy that's going to come? And I'm not against this at all.
I think that, I think that's a million dollar question, let me tell you why I think that's a million dollar question. Because you don't know what's coming five to seven years down the road in the way of development. But I'll also say this, if you don't get a fee in place and plan in a smart fashion, you may miss the boat as far as the ability to collect that money to deal with the impact. The other thing you have to be careful with when you set these impact fees is this, and that is, you also don't wanna create a barrier towards development. You don't wanna send the signal that we don't want your development. You know, you don't wanna create that to the point where you choke off any potential future growth in development, because growth in development is important to a community, you know, and, you know, I think you can send, and I think that's one of the concerns that I think has come up in some of the neighboring cities that have had this discussion about impact fees in general, is they don't wanna create the situation to the point where it becomes not effective, not cost-effective for a developer to come into a community. You want the right type of growth, which are...
Are we talking about $1,000 a unit, or $5,000?
I'm not kinda hazard, I'm not kinda haphazard, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
I will tell you that, I will tell you that it is, again, it is, it's a situation that you need to understand that they look at an analysis of your overall infrastructure, they develop a capital improvement plan based on that analysis of the infrastructure. And we've talked about the fact that this city right now, with its existing infrastructure, has several million dollars worth of improvements on roadways.
I get it now, what you're saying is, this is not arbitrary, we're gonna do a study and figure out, just like we did with the land values on the...
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
So we're talking, we're talking about any new development actor, this ordinance is... So we're talking, we're talking about any new development after this ordinance is changed or approved? Nothing retroactive to anything that's already here or been approved? Is there all new developments that we're looking to point out?
And I've seen other cities who are doing this do, like, fees on a percentage, like, working into the full value of the fee. So plans that are already in the works don't have to pay that full amount. They'll do a 30% of the fee for the first couple of years, and then 60%, and then the full within about five years. So...
It's a staged implementation, you know, which is, which is...
Seems fair.
Yeah, it's a viable way to go back because the fees, if you start, you think cars are expensive?
I had a couple of questions. This is, I read the government code, chapter 395, and I couldn't tell if this is something that is applicable only within the city limit or if we can do this to new subdivisions or development in the ETJ as well, or is it applied?
There's no question it applies within the city limits. The issue comes down to the applicability and those subdivisions coming into the city. In our situation, it's kind of like we dealt with on parks. I can't spend the money outside of the city, but the fee at some point will be applicable, much like the wastewater impact fees are applicable to an entire service area other than the city. But we're obviously not going to charge it to anybody who's outside the city right now. You're setting up a fee that would address an impact area, but you would limit it to those areas within the city limits first.
And then a big part of the methodology and requirements for this and the study is a capital improvements plan? Do we currently have a capital improvements plan in Salido?
We have a street assessment that was done in 2019, which was the first full-cost street assessment we've done that determined the grade of all of our streets and the grade of the value of improvements of all of those streets based on the type of improvement we wanted to make, be it chip seal or be it going into an asphalt overlay. And those costs range from, you know, a little over, what, a couple million to several million.
But we don't have anything about flood control, drainage, other facilities, water, roadway?
Not at this time. You not have, this city has never done a flood study, which it needs to do, and we talked about that. There's been no flood study done in this community to look at overall drainage. And I use the word, I don't want to use the word flood. I think drainage is a more appropriate word to use. You'll do some drainage improvements with any street improvements you make, but when we're talking about a drainage study, we're talking about something that actually looks at the installation of true drainage structures and be it storm sewer, be it open gut channels, those type of things. That needs to happen.
Okay, and that's a requirement for this? And would that be done and then do that $20,000, like, professional thing here? Is that totally separate?
It'd be a separate study that would come with that, but you're going to look at those type of improvements in the assumption process and the analysis and development of the capital improvements plan. They'll look at those type of things and put estimates for those type of costs.
Okay.
So what we're looking for from us tonight is this discussion, obviously, are we looking for us to make any recommendations on advisory committees or?
Well, no, just kind of, we wanted to float the idea and start the process because, again, it's going to take some time to get the process going. If there's interest in looking at something other than what we have on the books today, which this would be a more comprehensive approach than what we have on the books today. Is there interest in doing that? And if there is, then what we'll do is we'll continue the process of putting together maybe an action plan that you can look at, and then we can make a recommendation to the board to fund the study to get the process started. I don't want to scare you on the eight-month, eight-month time window. I think it can be done sooner than that. But that's, if that's, we've got some of this stuff already done, I guess, from a jumpstart standpoint from our previous work that we can incorporate. But it takes a little bit of time, and it will be controversial. There's no question, just because of the cost involved. Staged or not, staged helps, but staged or not.
The more I've looked into this, I think as Salido grows and becomes, you know, thriving entity in central Texas, these sort of studies and the capital improvement plan are things that we need to address. And street impact fees or the possibility of them are part of that. But it's a bigger issue than just the impact fees possibly. We're talking about the infrastructure and maintaining it as it grows and budgeting for that. I think it, I think it's something that we should recommend to the board or that we should pursue if that's our ally. But I'm, you know, I'm a gullible loser, so...
Yeah, I had, the, she mentioned drainage, and I'm not advocating this, but I will tell you, it's, drainage impact fees are very common. And those are fees that are typically applied across the board in the city, not just on your development. But they're typically applied across the board. There's only a residential fee that goes towards that to pay for major drainage improvements and things along those lines. Again, I'm not advocating that at all tonight, but I think it's in the back of your mind. Just like Katie said, from a long-term planning standpoint, something.
So what kinds of recommendations would you like us?
I guess tonight was just to give you guys, you know, a urgent look at it and to see whether it's something you're interested in, that's prepared an action plan on. And then what we'll do, the next thing is we'll bring you a formal proposal for you to consider with some cost estimates involved in that, that you can make a full recommendation to the board one way or the other. I just wanted to brighten, broach the topic with you. Katie, I think Katie's dead on on this as far as thinking. And the problem is this, if you wait on these type of things until it's too late...
It's too late?
It's too late, and, you know, you're getting hammered right now. And obviously, we will try to stretch and push as much as we can to make applicability outside the ETJ. That would be our goal.
That's good heads up. Follow up on the drainage issue, which is a big deal. Can we somehow get all of that done at the same time, sort of thing? Meaning that we study our roads, we study our drainage situation, see what's going on there?
The drainage study, drainage study is, is a different beast. And it's a different beast in the standpoint that we have to look at a watershed when you study drainage, which means we have to look upstream. And how far upstream we go, quite frankly, determines in large part in Austin or San Antonio. But example being, the problems we've experienced over on stage of surface in large part are the results of drainage off the interstate coming off that track next to schools. And we see that and we know that. And there are issues like that that you have to look further upstream. You have to look at road upstream channel capacity, those type of things before you can come in and start determining how to size structures, drainage structures, what type of drainage structures you need to put in. This city does not have curb and government. So will on one street, on Main Street, but...
So one bite of the elephant at a time?
Yeah, and the drainage study is something that I, that we've had some discussions with the county to look at, maybe looking at something a little bit more regional that can incorporate us. There's, there are plans to come in at some point in the near future, we believe, from our rear end, to come in and look at remapping this community from a floodplain standpoint. And part of that, part of that remapping process is going to involve the drainage study. And so I think that, you know, hopefully we can, you know, coordinate and piggyback on that and reduce our costs and get the data we need to help plan for the drainage structures we've got to work on. The day is going to come, and I'm just telling you right now, this city is not taking a strong stand on drainage. But the day is going to come, but we've got to take a strong stand on drainage on new development in this place. But we just can't let people build, you know, build subdivisions and let further water everywhere. They've got to manage their flows, and they've got to regulate those flows, both from a flow standpoint and from a water quality standpoint.
With all the new subdivisions, there's even water left.
Yeah, that's true. It works that potable water and non-potable water. Are we allowed to talk or... It's...
I'm sure cut to the mic if you would.
I don't want to do that. I just figured we're like this. It's not very many people here, but...
It just helps to get it on the record if you come up to the mic.
Oh, I was just going to throw you all an idea that, I mean, modeling, a lot of these companies you're talking about will come out with a model, will model the entire area so that it's also, because you get a document, and it's, next year it's not any good. But you need to come in with more of the data that is reactive to where you see a 500-home development happening. You could actually plug that in to see what that does.
Absolutely.
As opposed to just having a book that sits on your table.
On drainage as well as on water quality.
That's correct.
Exactly right.
I needed for the record, it was just...
Since you opened it up, Lenny Reynolds, by the sound of it, Santa Rosa. Well, they did, they didn't, you could have said no to it. I like to piggyback when somebody gets such questions. Two questions. Number one, does the sanctuary pay a road impact fee? And then help me out. I don't know if they all have a copy of it already. Where in our ordinance is the road impact fee we already charge for subdivisions?
We don't charge a road impact fee for subdivisions. What we charge is, we charge, we establish an analysis process for certain-sized subdivisions, and that analysis process will determine whether there will be required improvements to be made.
And subdivision pays, the developer pays that? Does the sanctuary have to pay for their analysis? They're doing that now?
Yes, we're not paying for that, and they've actually had to do a second analysis.
But would they be subject to an impact fee if they ever do start building buildings?
If it is a, if it's a section that's already platted, no. If it's a new section that's platted, I don't know that they've got an exemption on those types.
So this is really...
They weren't exempt on impact fees for wastewater, so I don't know that there's an exemption. I have to pull it specifically in and then look at it, but I don't recall seeing something that exempts them from any type of traffic impact fee.
So an impact fee, if you spend the money to do that, is going to just, it's going to make developers stay away between the sewer, $5,000 per unit and another several thousand, it's really going to, it's going to, the sanctuary's already set, they can do anything anytime. But the other developers, it'll kind of make them go away for it? Could be too expensive? It's a thought, anyway.
The thing, no, it's, I hear what you're saying, and that's kind of what I was talking about earlier, and that is, you've got to be sensitive to how you set that fee, how much you set that fee, and what you communicate and how you're going to use it. You could make it so restrictive that it sends, it sends the wrong message. Again, I don't think we're trying to send a no-broke message. I think what we're trying to send is, we want the right type of growth in this community. And, and you can do that and potentially manage that process and still recover fees to address that growth. It's just a process we've got to go through and feel it out.
I'm just, before we, I'm just for, before we spend $20,000 on that, I'd love to see a drainage or water or flooding study. It seems like that might be safer for everybody. Thank you.
All right, so do we, do we want to ask the village staff to pursue an action plan for street impact fees, drainage fees, and/or a capital improvement plan?
I'm not sure that that's in order right now. This is just supposed to be a discussion, it wasn't supposed to be a recommendation or anything like that.
Right. No, we don't have to make any recommendation.
I would like to keep this as just FYI kind of meeting where we're now aware of what some of the items that need to be addressed before we proceed on it from there. Is that right?
Well, I mean, I think you're proceeding on things anyway. You're proceeding... Well, Katie, what Katie's asking is, do we, do you want to basically tell us to put together an action plan to bring you to eventually make a recommendation to the board on pursuing or not? So all she's asking for is basically the formal proposal.
Did you take that first step?
Yeah. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you have to...
It means finding out...
Anything exists, educating herself.
Yeah, I think this may be a first step in to see how far we need to proceed this.
Yeah, it means finding out the associated costs. Is there any?
Is there a motion in order?
No.
Just suggestions?
Yeah.
Why do you suggest yes, John, provide us with more details on this idea?
Developer proposal, mind you, you could say yes.
Yeah, I'll say, if you do that, we can then make a, we can make a motion to advance it to the development or...
Okay, all right. Then with that, this zoning meeting is adjourned.